Are you ready?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Our work. And the button's pushed.
Okay. So, oh, there we go. Right.
You're not you're not by yourself.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for being here for our study session. Today is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. It's 5:04 PM. We're convened today as the Provo City School District Board of Education. We're meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. And we're going to begin today with a roll call. I'm Rebecca Nielsen, Board President.
Jennifer Partridge Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Lisa Vois, Board Member.
Meg Van Wagenen, Board Member.
Pashvala, Student Board Member.
Wendy Gutt, student Board Member.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Karen McCain, Board Member.
Devin Daley, Director of Strategic Studies.
Tony Dow, Superintendent.
Okay, thank you so much. And welcome to everybody online and in person with us today. Thank you so much for being here. Is there a motion to convene our study session today?
I move that we convene a study session.
Thank you so much. Motion made by Board Member Partridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Lisa?
Yeah.
Great. Second by Board Member Vois. We are now in our study session. Okay. I second-guess myself thinking we need to take a vote, but we're not in executive, so it's good. Um, okay. We are actually gonna try something new today before I do the board handbook training. Uh, Jennifer and Wendy and Devin and I, we're talking about how we can make sure we integrate our newly adopted, um, strategic plan into our meetings to help remind us of our vision and our mission and our goals before we have these meetings so that we can stay focused. So, we are going to recite this.
I love it.
We're gonna just see how this goes. So, we're gonna recite this. Anyone who's here with us is welcome to please recite this with us so we can be reminded of, of our goals as we meet today. So, are you guys ready for this? Okay, ready? Here we go.
The Provo City School District is a vibrant learning environment where all students become lifelong learners and engaged community members. We are committed to our mission to welcome, educate, and inspire. Our work is guided by our core values, belonging, growth, empowerment, creativity, and community, while staying focused on our priorities of academic achievement, wellness and safety, and stewardship of resources.
All right. So, thank you, everybody. We're open to suggestions. We, Jennifer and I have been talking about reciting that prior to the business meeting, maybe as well, or maybe just the study session, or having maybe someone take turns reading it, but we feel it's important to be reminded of that and to integrate that into our meeting. So, if you have any thoughts or anything on that, we're open to it. If you hate reciting it, we also are open to that. I know it's kind of strange, but we felt like, I don't know, we needed to do something. So, we're open to thoughts and suggestions. Maybe someone reads it, whatever. So, let us know. Um, okay. We are gonna go ahead and, um, start with our board handbook training, and I'll be doing that today. So, um, just for, um, information purposes, Melanie and I have been meeting and redoing the, um, the board handbook. I wanna say renovating. That's not the word. I'm, why is my brain not working? What are we doing? Not renovating. Revising. Thank you. We're revising it. Um, so today, the attachment that I have actually comes from the revised board handbook, which is a foul pitch that we're going to go ahead and bring to you guys, try and bring to you guys at the next meeting.
Awesome.
And we'll get you copies of that ahead of time. But today is items requiring board approval or votes, and items requiring superintendent approval. Bonnie, are you able to put that up there? Is that okay? Okay. So, um, I think most of us are pretty familiar with these things because we've been voting on them for at least a couple of good years already. Um, but items that require board approval is policies, purchases of $50,000 and above. Um, here in red is a, kind of a little change here, which, um, is because of our, our changes to our policy, travel policy, but student travel in the U.S. greater than 425 miles away. Um, resolutions regarding specific issues, employee group contracts, calendaring items, which I believe includes consent calendar in there. I think that's implied there, but we may wanna be more specific there. And then also other, any other board level items brought forward by the superintendent. So, the difference between us and what the superintendent is required to approve is that she, um, is in charge of approval of all procedures, um, although we do always appreciate that you get our input on those. Thank you so much for that. Um, purchases of $10,000 to $50,000, any student travel in the U.S. less than 425 miles away, and then any other personnel and management items under her review. So, does anybody have any questions or, um, any clarifications or anything they wanna make on these two?
Is there a, items requiring business administrator approval?
Um, there's not, but that's a good suggestion that we can add into our, into our handbook.
Does it say everything?
Like, what?
Does it say everything?
That they're not really wrong. That was a little odd.
I mean, financial contracts are your.
So, contracts and IOs and, um, purchases between $10,000 and $50,000 have that full.
So, that's a great suggestion, something we can add to the handbook. So, okay.
And, and in board docs, it says this agenda item is stewardship of resources, but I don't know, would this be under growth because it's professional development?
We just attached it to one of the three priorities because it only allowed us to.
Okay.
Oh, I understand. I didn't understand your question, Teri.
It's under four, under five.
Yeah. You see goals? It's the, it's all new.
Yeah, that is so weird.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, yes. Okay. So, what was your, so now that I understand what you're referring to, what was your question, Teri, again?
Should it be under growth, under the values, or under just the priorities?
You're saying rather than stewardship of resources?
Our plan was just to categorize them within the three priorities because then we give out those other values, which is stick to which of the three priorities.
Awesome. Okay, perfect. All right, let's go on to item number five, then. Wasatch Elementary School Community Council. We have a trust lands plan amendment here.
Just by way of a reminder, the Board of Education approves all trust lands plans, including amendments.
Go to the front there.
Thank you. So, just as a reminder, um, one of your roles is to approve school improvement plans that also include a land trust plan. Wasatch Elementary and their school community council have requested an amendment to their plan. Uh, in your documents, you've got a copy of just a summary of what that proposed change is. You have the original plan, and then you have the proposed plan. Just in quick summary, they wanna spend the money differently. Instead of paying for a class size reduction of an extra teacher, they wanna convert that money and pay for instructional assistance to help with their interventions. That's, their goals do not change at all. It's just a change from spending on certified staff to spending on classified staff members to help them.
Is this likely, just, I know there was a principal change, just a different approach?
Yeah. They also have, they don't have as many class size needs right now, but also the num, the availability of resources for aides, a little bit less this year, and so they wanna be able to use the trust lands money for that. Any other questions? Okay. We recommend that you approve that in the board, uh, business meeting later today.
Thank you so much, Teri. Item number six, Franklin Elementary School update.
Jason Benson. Okay. Put up a PowerPoint. All right. Okay. So, I'm Jason Benson. I'm the proud principal of Franklin. If you haven't been there, come see us, please, because it, it is an awesome, it is a fantastic place. You're struggling a little right now, but, um, it's awesome. So, could you hit the next button? So, for the school board, including you two, um, this is our book of the year. It's called Magical Yet. When you come visit us, I have a copy for you. Um, and I'm holding it around some so you can, so we can, um, come see it. Because we're working hard. You'll see that, um, we own the data once again. Um, but we are working hard to address our concerns, but we need your help as well. Okay? So, if you can go to the next one. Um, we just wanna first of all, say thanks because last year, the, the board voted to give us, um, our assistant principal and our coach first. And so, we've had a jumpstart, um, um, before all of the other schools, and it's been awesome. Lance and Heidi have been fantastic. And so, as we talk about data, um, Lance, Mr. V., as the kids call him, and this is our school schedule, which we didn't wait for the data to get released at the first of October. We knew that the data wasn't gonna be too good. So, we spent all summer, Lance did, and I'm not kidding, like 45 iterations of the schedule to address all of the needs and our tier one focus. Okay? So, I would not have been able to do that if Lance would have been given to me over the summer. So, please, 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 just know, um, it's made the world of difference, you guys being proactive and doing that. Okay? This is a reflection of our focus on tier one instruction. You'll see that, um, we do have a little bit of later in the meantime, but we focus on our 95% core and using our pairs. We have a push-in model with that, but our focus really is making sure that our tier one instruction is very solid with all of our teachers, providing as much support as we can during that time. Okay? All right. Next one, please. Um, we spent also the summer updating our PBIS program. Um, some great feedback from Wendy is that we just needed consistency across the board, so we appreciate that when she was in, um, our buildings. So, one of the things that we, we do, and what we do after each long break is we do a PBIS boot camp where we just tell our kids, this is how we behave, this is our expectations. And so, we redid all of that because of our kids can't behave and our teachers can't teach. Right? And so, um, so that's great. Okay? Next. Um, it is honestly a wonderful place, and sometimes, um, in the past, I've heard of Franklin's down on the west side, but I wanted to know, there are amazing things going on this. This young lady, um, took second in state, um, for being, um, Miss Utah for, like, and she's amazing. Okay? We did, uh, this is Operation Warm, where they, um, came and donated coats for all of our kids. Our kids did a fundraiser. Guess how much they, they raised selling chocolate bars? Anybody? $22,000. For our littles. Twenty-two, our kiddos. Right? And we have like 400 kids. All right? Our student council, who we love, okay, um, Kafusi Kikis? It's gonna be hell. Yeah. Came, and that was awesome. We had over 100 kids that were coming, served. Um, and then our PTA right here, they want everybody to come to our school. It's funny, they're going to the state PTA, and they're inviting and saying, come to Franklin, um, and come be part of this. And so, um, we're proud of our school. Okay? So, there's a lot of great things going on. All right. Next. Um, our school improvement goals, okay? Um, as you guys, I don't know if you remember, last year, we had some CSI consultants, and then, um, we had some concerns with them, so then we got some new ones. So, our, um, and once again, thanks to the superintendent and Jared and Michelle. So, our goals changed about mid-year last year. So, and I can share this with all of you. Um, so, our MLs, which are the majority of our school, we're struggling, um, and I know that that's something, um, across the board, but we want to increase their proficiency from five to 20% by the end of the year. Um, our EDA, which are economically disadvantaged kiddos, which, um, are the majority of our school as well. Okay? We want to be able to go from 17 to 29%. One of our, our biggest struggles that I'm gonna talk about too is our students with disabilities. Um, they really struggled in math, as you can see, um, the 0% were proficient. All right? And, um, so that is a huge need, that we're working with our special ed kids on that. And then just overall, we wanna make sure that in ELA and math, that we'd want our kids to go up by 6% in math. Any questions on the goals? We feel that they're, they're doable and that we need to do a better job on that, but that's our main focus as we look on our MLs, all of our kids in our students with disabilities. Okay? Next. All right. So, as we look at our data, um, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but, um, but as you can see, with our achievement, um, it did go down, okay? Which is frustrating. I mean, just being honest with you. We, we work incredibly hard. Um, English went down about 5%, math about 5%, and science went down 1%. Okay? And so, we spent a lot of time over the summer saying, you might be recorded, I won't cuss. So, like, what happened, right? I mean, what's going on? Because when you work so hard, it's frustrating to get this. And I, and if, I can be very vulnerable for a minute. The teachers do own this. Like, I met with, um, two of our most veteran teachers on Friday, and they just cried because they just said, what else can we do for our kids? Because they're not making excuses, they're saying, what, what more can we do? Okay? So, um, so we know that our proficiency went down. Our growth? It's average. Woo, we'll take average. All right? Okay. It wasn't exemplary. English is down a little bit low. If it would have been 48%, I believe it would have been average. Okay? But if, if you look across the board, um, we're holding our own with the district and with the state on our growth. We need to get that higher, though. Right? We need our littles, and as long as we can continue to grow. With our Ls, that did drop as well. Okay? Even though if we look at our, um, and their MLs, I know that we say, but about 24%, and then their proficiency dropped as well, which is a little bit lower. But once again, you saw our, um, our school improvement goal is gonna focus on that. And then early literacy, okay? That's with our, our cadence, reading. Um, we have about 36% of our, 35% of our kids reading on grade level dipped a little bit as well. Okay? And then students making typical or better progress is 69%. And I think, isn't the district goal 70%? So, we're, I don't know. Is that, or is it 80%? I'm not sure.
I thought the state was 60%.
60%. So, um.
Maybe it's higher.
But, but once again, we're, the data is what it is. We're gonna own up to, uh, but this was a report card that was just released. We didn't wait for that. Like, we didn't say, we're gonna wait for this right now until we make our changes. We've been working on the things for months because we, we know we need to do, and that's why we worked on our schedule to focus on the tier one instruction. We need to make sure that the growth is there for our kiddos. So, I'll talk in a minute about tier two instruction, but really, we're trying to beef up that tier one instruction so that our teachers have that support. Okay? All right. Next. Um, here's some challenges, just once again, be very open and vulnerable. We have a lot of very new and young staff. Okay? That's something that we, um, we've talked about before. Um, but even right now, I'm looking for a fifth grade teacher. One of my fifth grade teachers had some things come up, and so she's leaving. So, we'll hire a new teacher, um, in fifth grade when she'll start, uh, the week, last week of October. Okay? So, those are just some challenges. And then just teacher turnover, right? We've hired like seven new teachers again this year. Okay? Um, so one of the, the challenges with that, if I use like first grade, for example, last year, thanks to Michelle and teaching and learning, we spent all year trying to get them just trained and updated on everything. Two of them left, and then one had a baby. And she'll come back in December. Right? And so, that is a challenge as if we're, we're looking to do that. Um, paraprofessional support, um, as you guys understand, um, budgets are a little bit more lean and tight, and so, um, we don't have as much support this year. Um, for example, in second grader intervention groups, we need, if we were to like break them apart to each individual need, we would need 12 different groups. We have enough, and this includes my title on facilitator teaching, to, um, we need 12 groups right now. We have enough personnel to cover nine of those. Okay? And so, just being able to meet the needs of our kids is a little bit. And then I talked a little bit about first grade. With our MLs, um, we get lots of new-to-country kids, which I know is something that's very common in some of these. Um, I think we've had over 15 that have come this year, but we only have one para, this dedicated full-time to be able to help them. Um, most of our, most of our grade littles have one person that helps to, that speaks Spanish per grade level, but just because you speak the language doesn't mean you're proficient in teaching those kiddos. Okay? And then, um, we've talked a little bit about special education. We've been very lucky that they've been, um, as supportive as they can be, but we have a number of Level C students. Um, we've had, at this point, 12 to 13, and that just means they have more minutes. And so, we have one full-time, um, special education teacher and two part-time, and then two pairs to meet the needs. And so, a lot of that goes to behavior, um, needs, and that's where the, the intensive behavior comes in sometimes because Jared's been great as, you know, he is, hears kids screaming in the background and we're running around, but sometimes as a principal, there's only things that I can do to, to help those behaviors. So, those are some of the challenges. And then I just put the CSI inconsistency. It's changed a little bit with, with funding and then even expectations. Their staff at the state have changed a little bit, and so, for us as a school, we're lucky to have Michelle navigating that, but sometimes it's hard to know what is, what is the expectation and everything on that. Okay? So, those are just some of the challenges, but I want you to know, like, I'm getting texts right now. Lance is saying, you've got this. I had, um, teachers come up and say, can we come and support you? Right? And they really wanted you to know, and you guys have seen that before. Um, so we are committed. We are struggling, though. We're trying to get things just jump-started as kids have moved in and out in the future. So, um, yeah, that's kind of us in a nutshell. Okay? Um, I think the next thing is just questions. Well, question, we are very concerned about the data as well. Um, we'd love to sit down and talk to you, but we're, we've been working on that, yeah.
What is the, maybe, maybe you talked about this and I missed it. What is the turnover of your students? Like, are you teaching the same kids from year to year, or do you have such a turnover that there's a high percentage?
Jared asked me this the other day, and so I went back and just, as an example, from our current sixth graders, we have 43. Um, two years ago, we only have 11 of those same students.
So, you have quite a high turnover. So, it's, it's hard to make progress, I would guess, when you don't have the same students every year. You get new students that come in.
Yeah.
Um, and then how do you, what are your, um, maybe it's implied, but what does need to happen in order for you to, to, for, for you to be able to see and the kids to be able to see, uh, a change in their achievement scores?
So, um, for example, I was talking to my instructional coach today, Heidi, and, and she takes this personal, too, right? So, she worked last year, ones again, are examples, our first grade team, who, they didn't come back compared to our fourth grade team, who were both back. They, we're seeing that growth when, if we can retain our teachers, right? Their skills will increase instead of having to retrain. So, if you have any ideas, like, we're not scaring them off, I hope not, but we're very picky about that, but it is also a challenging school at times. There's a lot of stress involved because we're open and honest on this. Um, but I think if we can retain our teachers, especially the good ones, then we don't have to retrain every year, and so it would be very helpful on that. And then just honestly with our kids, that being consistent. Jared said, well, let's see where those kids are, like, those 11 kids, and see if they're growing, and if not, then we can use them next.
Okay. Thank you.
So, excellent questions. Thank you. Yes?
Um, so my question said, you said you're focusing on tier one instruction. Can you give us an example of what does that mean? What does that look like?
Yeah, of course.
And how are we helping especially those new teachers to know how to focus on that?
Sure. Okay. So, tier one instruction is when you give it to, like, the majority, if not all, of your class. Okay? It's like the basic instruction that everybody needs and deserves. Okay? And so, that would mean that if, if I was the teacher and you're my students, I'm giving it to you during this instruction time, it's very specific on our curriculum, which is a celebration. In the past, we've had teachers who have not used district curriculum. They say they are, but then when you kinda walk out, it's a frustration. And so, we appreciate the training, like Judy's been fantastic in providing the training or instructional coach. Those trainings that our coaches have each week are focused on how to use the curriculum and the tier one instruction, um, and getting our instructional coach in there. Um, like I said, she's been able to model, especially for like 95% in reading, um, at this point with 15 out of the 17 teachers. And so, it's making sure they're trained on the curriculum, making sure that they're using it with, I don't wanna say the word fidelity, but they have a, a strong understanding of how to use that curriculum to help the kids. And then, this might sound bad, but we've taken out a lot of the autonomy in our school to kind of choose what they are teaching, and that's not a bad thing, but by eliminating them saying, you're gonna teach this and this, when we go and we can coach, we have that expectation that they're using the same things, they're on the same page, so that when we do work as PLCs on Friday, the, they're on the same page in the pacing guides and things like that. Did that answer your question?
Yes. I have a question for Wendy and Teri. So, what are the district or what is the CSI team doing to give extra support to, to the school?
Yeah, they're, we're definitely dealing regularly with the school, myself. We just, we're setting up to have a monthly meeting with Title One, to talk through with special ed as well, a regular basis to check in. We'd like to ask Principal Benson to return and report quarterly on these goals.
I'm sorry you have to listen that much.
You know, as he and I work together and with Michelle's support, we, we wanna make sure that we don't just discuss tier two interventions, but that we're really focusing on giving teachers feedback, modeling, and, and that he and his team are spending time in the classroom to understand quality of instruction that's happening. Those are the priorities that, that we are trying to provide that support for right now.
And they are very visible, just so you know. I mean, when they come, Jared's there, Wendy walks around, it, it's awesome. In fact, my PTA wants Wendy to come to the meeting on November 1st because they wanna dress like her. And they, like, they do. After their goal, they're like, we wanna dress nice and fancy. So, don't, don't feel obligated, but they, 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 they want to be able to be that, so.
We should wear jeans and a t-shirt. We should, we should.
It is the day after Halloween, so.
Um, I guess I'm, I'm wondering about, first of all, thank you so much, and I hope your teachers know how much we appreciate them and want to find every way to support them and the students.
Thank you.
Um, I, I'm thinking about the testing process itself and just wondering, like, what are some supports? Are there supports that we could make in terms of the environment around testing, the access in terms of students making sure they know how to use the technology? Like, all of that.
Great question.
Do you feel like there's something that would help you with that, making testing a little more fluid, so does make for those kids?
And I think that that's an excellent question, especially with all of our new-to-country kids that have to learn to do that.
Right.
So, um, with the district adopting the NWEA, okay, which has been great, um, we've been able to just, so we've had Lance, my assistant, and Heidi, they're the ones that are administering it this first time, not only to help the teachers just focus on instruction, but that way they can help the kids understand the tools, um, a little bit more effectively. And then we're doing like the benchmarks as well for the rise benchmarks and possibly the internes, but it's just as much helping them understand how to take the test as, as the information. So, we're, we're very aware of that, and that's a great suggestion, but it's just giving them opportunities to be able to experience that. So, we're, so, great question.
Are you allowed to have like volunteers help during, like, I don't know if that's even a helpful thing, or what the barriers are during testing, but I would guess, besides the actual content? Well, no, just like, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, to administer those tests, do you feel like?
Michelle shaking her head.
No. I, I didn't think so. I guess my question just is, besides the content validity of the test, there's always the complicating factor of being new to country, being a terrible learner, of accessing technology comfortably, navigating all of that. So that's all I was wondering about.
No, and I think that's a great question. And then we work also motivation is a key factor for a lot of our littles, because they just hurry through. So we set goals, we have parties, you know, we have things like that. But I appreciate that, because if our kids know the content, but they don't take the time on the test, then it's kind of a moot point. So thank you. Great point. Yeah.
You mentioned to me that you switched CSI consultants, correct? Are you, are you happy with them?
Yeah, I am, actually, yeah. Yeah, I worked with them a little bit before I knew them, so yeah, they're great.
The process was much better.
Yeah, Terry was there, our teachers were involved, so yeah, we're very optimistic, and they should be coming in the next month or so to be able to meet with us. Yeah, I was really happy with them.
Okay. And this is not a guarantee or a promise, but I am interested to know, like, if we could do one, one more thing that would greatly help Franklin, like what is it out of maybe those challenges you listed? What is, what is the one thing that you think beyond what is already happening is going to help the most?
Honestly, looking at our needs with our kids, we could definitely use more personnel, that highly trained people, of course, that could come in, because kids need those small groups targeted specifically on what they need. And at this time, if we can't like meet those, like, so you group them together, and if you need this and you need this, but we're going to put you together to give you kind of generalized instruction, it's good, but it's not exactly what you need. So to me, a few more people would be very helpful.
And would you rate that higher than like figuring out a way to get teachers to stay, retaining teachers?
Well, if you're going to give a teacher more money to pay to stay, yeah, go, you know.
Well, like I said, no, they're teacher promises. I'm just saying, like, in your, you know, in your perfect world, like if we could give you one more thing, would, would teachers, retaining teachers be more effective? Or would it be more effective to get you more personnel?
So if we can retain the teachers, yes, and that's not a slight, because a highly qualified teacher in front of us is research-based, shown to be the most effective thing, instead of putting them out with a pair. And we have amazing pairs, but yeah, I'd say retaining our teachers and then just having a few more bodies to be able to get in and teach would be great.
I'm concerned. You mentioned in one of the slides that you haven't received the CSI money.
Does it come in the state?
That had paid for as a bunch of pairs.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the issues, so.
It has to be voted on by the state board, and the state board has not released that funding yet. They haven't voted on it, and so we haven't gone on that.
When are they planning on voting on that?
That's a great question. So what happened actually was the state legislatures took a repeal, the state improvement funding. And the funding that federal, so CSI is a federal state improvement, federal improvement status, and, but it was funded with some state money. And that funding source was stopped with repeal. So the category of improvement remains, but there isn't federal allocation for that money at this time. Our, weirdly, the state improvement plan, the state improvement law, has different funding attached to it. So what I talked to you about at the study session last couple of weeks ago, Provo High being an elevate school and having that big grant, that's funded through different legislation. So the director of the, the school improvement department at the state office, Sarah Webb, she is working with the federal government right now on being able to access funding for the federal turnaround program. And she's, she's received good feedback on some things, and she's positive about it, but there's no timeline on anything for it. We were, I mean, sort of promised that this would be an ongoing, you were in those meetings earlier, they said that, but that was an incorrect promise made with soft money, not long-term money, and misunderstood by the people who made that promise, so.
Yeah, that's a concern.
Yep.
Because that promise was, we can fund pairs with that.
Yep, and we have help.
Yeah, and that's part of our.
And how are, how are I number supposed to improve if we're not getting the help, the funding and the help?
We'll improve. It'll take us a little bit longer, but a little bit less, you know. Okay, anything else? Sorry, I always take a little bit long, but we sure love and appreciate everybody. Hope you know, please come visit us, take, meet our teachers. They know that you're here for them, and I do too, so I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go over our district report card information, but I'm gonna.
I know we're behind in schedule. I would really like to suggest that this is going to get us back on schedule, but I don't think it is.
We'll do our best. We'll figure it out.
So I sent you the data, and it is attached in Board Docs, and I wanted you to just have a chance to look over it. And then we can ask some questions. I have lots of experts in the room that can help us. We have Michelle, and Judy, and Doug, and Darryl, and Jared, and Jason, and all of these individuals have been kind of worrying over it. I didn't want to just rehash or summarize the data. I feel like you have some time to look at it, but what I wanted to do was just highlight a few things that are, that we're noticing in the data, and really spend a majority of the time on some of the key takeaways that will guide us as we, as we really align this with our strategic plan. So we'll just go through each of the tabs that were at the bottom. So English Language Arts, we are meeting or exceeding the state average. K-12, that still doesn't feel good to me, because it's only a sixty percent proficiency rate, and so, okay. I feel okay about that. Our early literacy goals, we're meeting our growth goals, but not our proficiency goals. So if you see, if you see those numbers in terms of our proficiency rates for reading, they're below where we want them to be. But when the kids are with us, they're making tremendous progress. It's just, they're usually a grade level or two behind, and we're struggling to get them caught up, right, to get them to grade level. One of the things, and I'll talk a little bit more about this in just a minute, at the secondary level, the NWEA really exposed how behind our students are in terms of our reading levels. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe like, I'll give you an example, like Shoreline, only twenty-five percent of their students are reading at grade level right now. So that's a, that's a significant problem if we're looking at, you know, setting them up for success. We've never had those kinds of numbers before to actually look at that, so this data's been really helpful. And Tommy's already like, we're trying to figure out what does this look like, Brooke at Centennial's same situation. I'll come back. Don't worry, I'm not leaving English Language Arts. I'll just go through each one of these. Math, we've had some really impressive successes. Edgemont, Westridge, Tempanogus, Tempehue. Our growth at the high school level is above the state average for Provo High and Tempehue High, but our concerns are still that our secondary math, particularly at the high school level, is below the state average in achievement. And math is seen as a gateway course for success in high school and beyond. So students that are failing and not demonstrating proficiency levels in ninth grade will really struggle, not only to get to graduation, but they're going to struggle to move beyond that in terms of any kind of post-secondary success. And so this is, this is something that I basically said to Doug, I need you to fix secondary math. I think that was just my quote to him. And he has no idea what that means. I just said, I just need you to fix it. He wasn't here just a moment ago, but. I'm like, just fix it. And he's like, okay. And so that'll be our process. Another concern is that our middle school math growth is not where we need that to be as well. And we, and we were just talking as a leadership team, you know, we've had some turnover in our middle school math teachers. It's harder to keep those individuals and get them to engage with our middle school students. And so we know that the teacher is going to be key in all of this, and so that creates some challenges for sure. In science, we had several schools with increases. There was actually quite a few, so I didn't list all of them. But what you are noticing is the elementary schools have really tried to focus on STEM. You're kind of seeing that coming out in, in the science scores. What we are seeing, though, especially at the high school level, is that we're lower than the state in our growth. And at the high school level, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Aspire Science Test, but it actually doesn't really test the standards of the class that the student takes. So for example, if I'm in ninth grade science, I take a ninth grade science class. Let's say I'm taking biology, but my test is actually not on biology. It's just, these are the standard science skills that a ninth grader should have based on what the ACT expectations are. And so if you haven't had a lot of exposure to science across your, you know, educational career, this can put you at a disadvantage. Now, what I will say is this is a challenge across the entire state. So it isn't like this is unique to Provo City School District. Everybody's getting the same science test, and we're clearly not performing at the level that other school districts are, and so that's something that we have to look at, so. The growth of the lowest twenty-five percent, this is your equity piece. This is what shows are we actually closing the opportunity gaps. And I wanted to highlight two schools that are, that have really made a concerted effort in this. And I really believe a lot of this is they talk about individual students. So Centennial Middle School and Independence High School, they set individual goals with students. There is a very intentional piece that in their PLCs, they don't just talk about seventy-five percent of students do this. It really is about what, who are the students that are not getting this? Who are the students that are excelling? And they have names and faces to them. That's a pretty big deal. The state auditor actually came out to meet with Nate and Michelle to talk about that our, our opportunity gaps in Provo City School District are some of the largest in the state, and so it has flagged for them. So it means that our students that are white and upper class are performing very well, and our students of color, and our economically disadvantaged students, and our multilingual students are not. And that we're not helping those students actually access core areas and becoming proficient. And you saw that in the data, I don't know, especially on language arts. I mean, you can see the achievement scores, and then you can see forty point gaps. When you started looking at multilingual learners, it wasn't quite as much with economically disadvantaged, and then when you look at students with disabilities, it's massive. And so those are things that create red flags with the state in terms of what we're doing here. Much of the research, and I'm going to talk more about this in just a minute, is that if we could get teachers to help students set individual goals and get them to track those goals and their progress, and to talk about that as, as just part of their MO of what they do in their classroom, that would be very powerful to create a greater sense of urgency. Michelle has done a good job of at our elementary schools, that interventions are very intensive for about fifteen days, and they progress monitor, they regroup the kids. We don't have anything like that at the secondary level. We shove you into an intervention class, if you're lucky, and we have one, and then you're stuck there forever and all eternity, and I have no idea why you would want to excel, because we're never going to let you out until the next school year. So, so we have some, some structural problems in terms of how we're handling that. And that, and that's, those are just scheduling issues. Those are, because we've looked at the schedule in a very traditional way, and so we've been talking about ideas about how to fix that. Multilingual learner progress, and I'll have Michelle jump in if there's something that I'm missing. Some huge celebrations here from Shoreline, Provost, Lakeview, and Provo High. Not only did these schools really help their students understand the importance of the WEDA test, the WEDA test is a four-hour test. So this is really hard to get kids to care about, especially once they end up in secondary and they've been in these classes for a long time. But they did a great job with the English Language Development teachers setting individual goals with students and helping them really understand the importance of that test and how it opens up opportunities for them. And so some of our schools are just doing a tremendous, a tremendous job with that. And when we're talking about the multilingual learner progress, we're just looking at their language acquisition and their ability to make adequate progress as well as to be proficient in that. It's not always translating, however, into academic performance, so that's the next piece that we have to address. But these schools have really invested a significant amount of resources and time, and they are to be commended for their efforts, because they really did a good job. Did you want to add anything to that, Michelle?
I would just add that at Shoreline in particular and Provo High, they made some really difficult decisions that challenged the system for scheduling with kids and were difficult conversations to have to really target this group of students. And I just, I think they need to be massively high-fived, because it was, it was a lot of really, really hard, hard work and hard things in their system to change.
Like a good example of that is when you put a student at Shoreline in a seventh period schedule in an English Language Development class, you just took away an elective. And you didn't take away an elective for a semester, you took away an elective for an entire year. So the fact that these teachers are able to make this kind of progress, so that hopefully students can be successful and then get back into their electives, that's a, that's a pretty big deal. This is a, this is a hard decision to make. It's hard for teachers who lose students in electives. It's also hard decisions for administrators to decide, is this, you know, is this the right decision? And I think we have some preliminary data to say, yes, we still have some work that we need to do there. Post-secondary readiness, this is something that we only evaluate our high schools on. I just wanted to mention, because you probably noticed a significant drop in Provo High's graduation rate. That graduation rate dropped, because traditionally what happens is our tech department, this graduation rate is from 2023. The graduation rate is always a year delayed, so this is not the 2024 graduation rate. So when that happened in 2023, and that, and those reports that went out, that was right at the time we were transitioning between Todd and Daryl, and between Jared and Kami. And those emails did not get to the right individuals, and so we did not get that data cleaned up appropriately. So this year, we have it all set up on a system. The high school principals are emailed every single month as to their updates. Daryl has copied on that. We had a meeting with Momi and Jacob and Kami to double-check how we're cleaning up all of that data before we submitted all of our final October one count. So we have fixed that particular situation. That was just something that wasn't even on my radar, as let's be real, I was also just new to. So I, I have no words. It was not, you know, I think there, it just was a tracking issue. And what that means is, for example, like, if a student has unenrolled from Provo High, and then they, and then we, they haven't been attached somewhere else, because the parent doesn't tell us where they're going, and we don't connect them in the UTRAC system to the next school, they get tied to Provo High School as a result. And part of cleaning up that data is going through and figuring out where are they, so we can get them attached to the correct school, so that it doesn't count as a dropout for us, so. We also have had a struggle in actually tracking our CTE pathway completers. So for you to be considered, for us to get points in CTE, there has to be a clearly delineated path of CTE courses, and those courses have to be connected as we're communicating with the state. Our counselors have not always known what that connection is, and so that's part of the reason why we bought the Power School Module Naviance, is to help track that, and then that will communicate with the state, so that that will be reporting that better. So part of this is how our data is actually communicating with the state and what that looks like. I don't think our, our numbers are at state average, but, but we could be a lot better, and we are doing a lot better. It's just we don't have the data to show that, so. And our high schools have really focused in their school improvement plans on making sure that advanced coursework is available to every student and as part of their school improvement goals, and you saw that in their school improvement plans. One of the tabs ranks all of the Title One schools in the state. I wanted you to notice that Provost is ranked as number thirty-five, I believe was the number for them. That's pretty incredible. And Spring Creek, also when you think about how highly impacted the Spring Creek population is, and Sunset View, we're all right there. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to those particular schools and the work that they've been doing, because they often are making tough decisions that are not always popular sometimes, because we're changing things, so. Now we're going to get to the exciting part, the major takeaways. Westridge and Tempanogus deserve cake. I am going to order them cake or something, because seriously, in math and ELA, the increases in achievement and the significant growth at both of these schools, Westridge has, you don't think that it has a highly impacted population, but it does have a sizable amount. And when you think about how highly impacted Tempanogus is, how many multilingual learners there are, I don't know, but Kim Hawkins and Carrie Rollins need a huge round of applause for just their awesomeness and their teachers. And so we started looking at, why are they successful? These leaders are in classrooms. They were giving specific feedback to teachers. You watch them. They know, all of our elementary principals are great at knowing kids by name, but, but they give them specific feedback about their instruction, and they know what's going well and what needs to be fixed. And, and they can do that in an environment that's very safe. Their teacher teams plan together, and they're looking at that data, and their teachers provide very specific feedback to students, not just good job, that this is where you are in your continuum of learning, this is what you need to keep doing, to keep moving in that direction. I was, I, we were at, Jared, were you with me when we were at Tempanogus? In the, in one of the dual immersion classes, and then that, oh my goodness, I about died. It was the most exciting class I've ever been in in my whole life. It was, I have never seen kids more excited about math in my entire life, and they just made fun of me, because I had no idea what they were doing with these manipulatives, because they never learned math with manipulatives. And they were, it was awesome. And they progress monitor all of their students, so they're, so it's not just the lowest performing kids. And we need to recognize how much time that takes to actually do that. And so part of this is, as Jared and I were talking with Clint at Tempanogus, is trying to help alleviate that pressure off of the teachers of what that looks like, but still allowing them to own their data, and how do we balance that? But when you're seeing this kind of success, it starts to sell that this is worth your time, like. So, so we may need to look at, what are some supports that we can provide there? But honestly, those two schools maze balls.
Are they doing a lot of that in their PLCs? So this is some of the changes we made, you made to PLCs?
Yes, but they're also, talk more about the progress monitoring.
So occasionally, specifically, there's a goal-setting component to that. And so both of these schools' leadership has been, there's an expectation to do that, but the why behind it became really important to the PLC process. So there was a little bit of a compliance piece of like, okay, we have to. But then once they started seeing the tracking behind that in the PLC conversation of like, oh, when I progress monitor this student on the skill that they've been being intervened on or enriched on, I can see that they are. that they are making growth. They also share those goals with the students and the parents, so, and they, they try to focus just on specific goals, because it can be overwhelming to set goals and everything, right? So, so the conversation of monitoring the progress that's happening in PLCs for sure, and then tied to that formative assessment they're doing in the classroom. So, really, both, I would say, yes, the PLC, but also the compliant part of like, do this because it's a good thing to do.
Thank you.
Another major takeaway is literacy is the key to everything. So what you notice is that our end-of-level assessments are reading tests. Whether they're math, they're science, whatever it is, it really is about, can you read, can you understand, can you figure out what it's asking you to do? And so, as we're looking at this, we need a two-tiered approach. And I, and I think we have a good system in place for interventions for reading and math at the elementary level, but we do not have successful interventions for reading at the secondary level at all. And so, we need to look at and start identifying, what does that look like? There are other districts that are utilizing and having some success with some really great intervention programs. Some of them are very expensive, some of them, you know, some of them are not. So, we need to investigate that, but then we also need to emphasize that literacy has to be emphasized in every subject. So, and it's the reading and the writing component, and you can't just have the reading piece. And I know that teachers don't want to grade the writing, I get that. So we need to, as a district, figure out, how do we support our teachers in increasing that demand for the writing piece without overwhelming and burning all of them out, because that's not helpful either. But, but truly, as we look at the RISE test, they are changing the ELA piece of this, so that the reading component is going to be based on social studies and science. And so, so our social studies and our science teachers had better be doing reading and writing all of the time and, and helping our students access those texts. Sometimes what happens is, it's like, well, that's too hard for the kids, so I'll just tell them what it says, or I'll get something that's a lower luck style and have them read that. Really, truly, when we're pushing kids to, to try those, to, to read stuff that's a hundred to two-hundred luck style levels ahead of where they are and to struggle with the text, that's what gets and pushes, and pushes those pieces. So, but we also need to identify, though, we have some kids who still don't know how to read in secondary schools. And so, we have to have a piece in place, because our secondary teachers are not trained in phonics, and they're not, they're not trained in those things, but we've got to, we've got to fill that gap for those students. So, so we have some work to do. That's a system-wide situation that we have to address as we start budgeting and prioritizing for the next school year, what does this look like?
Yeah. Just my question about how literacy in every subject, I know that's one of the principles of Avid. I've seen it in the past, it was a little bit, is that a focus that they're already doing, or is it something?
They're, they're, yes, they're, they're, yes. And I think, and I think the bigger piece is, how do you help teachers that are not reading experts and writing experts feel confident in teaching those things? So, I gave an example, when I was a social studies teacher, I went through a forty-hour training through WestEd that was called Reading Apprenticeship that taught me how to teach reading and writing in social studies, and what that actually looked like. So it was with my content, and, and Avid does similar things. It just needs to be an expectation. I think there are several teachers that are doing that. But what does that, what does that look like? How do I grade writing if I, if I don't feel confident in my own writing skills? You know, because I'm a math teacher, like, I don't, you know, like, it's tricky.
Is this writing skills like handwriting, or computer?
On a computer, writing an essay, writing my thought process, identifying major takeaways of a passage, supporting key evidence by citing sources. Those are the pieces where kids struggle. Our other major takeaway is, how do we help long-term ML students? By a long-term ML student, it's a student that's been, that hasn't exited out, like, so they've just been sitting at a Level Two or a Level Three for years and years, right? So helping them understand the importance of the WEDA and why that test is important. Provo High has really been emphasizing that, helping them to set a goal, helping our teachers understand that piece of it. And then, also, we have to transfer that into their academic performance. And so, a, a piece of this is, what are those specific skills that we give our content area teachers? This is the feedback I constantly get, particularly from secondary. How do I help kids understand chemistry if they don't speak English, like, or if they're struggling with the language piece of this? So, we need to be looking at, you know, do we use WestEd QTEL strategies for that, where it trains the teacher in that specific content area? All of that kind of professional learning is highly expensive. But, those are things we need to look at if we're going to have some long-term success with our, with our students. And we have to also recognize that our teachers have certain capacities in terms of, we can't burn them out either, right? They can't do all of the things. Like, like at some point, we're just going to run them right out of the profession. So we're going to have to identify which of these is going to be the most important. We're very good at a district at maintaining proficiency. A student comes in on grade level, they're going to leave on grade level. They don't fall behind. But if a student is not coming in at grade level, we can get them a year's worth of growth, we're just not good at getting them more than a year's worth of growth. And that's what we're going to have to start getting good at, is that accelerated learning. So that's what's causing those opportunity gaps. Some other takeaways, is our rigor where it needs to be? This is kind of going back to Lisa's question a little bit about, are we, to Jason, are we, are we helping our students understand how to take the test? That, that's a piece of it. But also, is our rigor in our classrooms actually matching the rigor that's on the test? So sometimes, I had a conversation with a principal where they were talking about, I walked into this classroom and it was so engaging, and the teacher was awesome, but their test scores are terrible. And it's because then, as we started to dissect that, they're not teaching the standards, the rigor isn't there. So the kids love the class, and it's really awesome, but it's not aligned to the standards, and it's not, it's not going in that direction, so that's problematic. And then, we just got word from the governor's office that they're pushing for a first credential requirement that would be added to the graduation requirements, which is basically going to be some sort of CTE-type of credential that a student would have to graduate with. So they have to, this is kind of what Norm Thurston was talking a little bit about with the meaningful senior experience. So if you're taking AP and concurrent, that counts, right? That advanced coursework counts, but also for those who aren't just a high school diploma, there, there needs to be more. We need to be preparing you for these post-secondary opportunities. That's it. What questions do you have?
How do we implement all this?
Great question.
And how do we fund it?
Ooh, those are good questions. I'll have an answer with Devon, not to her.
Oh, man.
She's like, we will?
No. Is that a reasonable goal from the governor to have the first credential, whatever that is?
Like, every graduate has a first credential.
Is that, I guess you can't, we're on camera.
Uh, is, I take it back.
I, I don't, I, I don't know. Like, TPI right now, they took a lot of their community council money to push kids to take CE, to do AP, and they're like, so that every kid will have an opportunity this year somehow.
But, but by CTE, that means completing a whole pathway, right? Not just a class?
They can't, yeah, that would, I mean, to get a first credential, you're going to have to be completing a series of classes.
Wow.
It depends on how, how the requirements.
It'll, it'll come out in the launch, touch heads end up.
Yes, it will, it will phase in. It's not something that's going to start next year, yeah. I think, I think the other piece of this is, you're going to find that it'll, you know, you're going to, you may end up with some graded diplomas, like we already have. We have twenty-four credit diplomas, there's twenty-eight credit diplomas, there's, you know, so this could be a, a piece of that that falls in, and I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. What the state is telling us is that most of our CTE completers that actually complete something that lead to some sort of meaningful certificate is sixteen percent right now. And so, they don't, the governor doesn't feel like when seventy percent of the jobs are going to need some sort of certification, we should be exiting our high school students with the ability to get into those jobs. Those are your entry-level jobs.
This is already in our strategic plan as a goal for our district, so whether the state requires it or not, like, I think it's.
We're a go.
Yeah, go ahead, Hodge.
If completing a CTE pathway is part of graduation, how are we going to do, because I know part of the CTE, some CTE pathways is an internship. And so, how are we going to factor that into like, class schedules and just like the overall graduation?
Great question. I don't, I don't have all of the answers for that, but, but we are going to have to figure that out. That, that is something that has to become a much bigger of what we do, to make that high school experience for sure.
So, this is great information for us, especially the last part seemed like something that's going to be shared with our principals, our teachers, their plan of how you're going to do that, just so we're aware.
It's going, it's going out to principals at our next leadership meeting.
Next, yeah, okay. And then I especially was, like, excited about some of the schools that are an example, and the things that they're doing well. So, I would just love to see maybe how can we share that example far and wide and have the rest of our great leaders learn from these really successful leaders.
So I think the Tempanogas sixth-grade math team, if I remember right, is presenting at the Learning Edge Conference. So BYU is hosting that conference, so that's where we have several of our educators that are going, and so they're presenting as part of that group. So, so I think what we have done in the past, or what, and I'll just speak for myself, what I've done in the past as a leader is always found, where are my areas of concern, and then you put all of your energy there. The goal now is to find those areas of success. What are those things, and how do we replicate that and get that elsewhere? It's not, you notice about these teams at Westridge and Tempanogas, it's not so much about the personalities of those individuals, it's about, notice what they're doing with students, it's about the individual attention, it's about that progress monitoring piece. So if that can be shared with, how do they manage that? Because that's what teachers are going to wonder, right? Like, how do I manage all of the things that I'm doing and be successful with that? They have to be the ones, because the teachers are going to learn much better from that than from someone who hasn't been in a classroom for fourteen years.
I know that a, a lot of schools have invested in Avid as part of their strategy to approach some of these, like, both achievement and growth areas. And I just, I think it'd be interesting to have, like, to correlate schools that have seen an increase or not with, is this a program they're running? Because if we do it for two or three years, but we're not seeing an increase, then that could help us know, like, maybe there's a program that is even better suited to the types of supports our teachers are needing, given just our specific district challenges. I just think that would be interesting to track.
Well, especially with the investment that we're putting into this.
Yes, right. And I know it takes some time, right, to get all of your teachers trained, and so, not saying we should know that right away, but over the next while while we track this data, I think that would be helpful.
Can you also remind me, with multi-learned language students, do we get extra funding for them?
Like, two dollars?
No, I'm serious. She's like, our budget's like $200,000 for all of our multilingual kids for the entire district.
Another thing that we need to go to our legislatures to help.
The fund is.
They are included in the at-risk calculation. Multilingual learners are, but it's a small portion.
And also the House Education, or no, wait, uh, one of the.
Appropriate?
Uh, no, Gina, that education committee you served on last spring that we, or in the summer, I gave you that document to take to that.
The Innovations Group?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, yes.
They, they said yes to bringing, right? Didn't they decide to bring to legislative session this spring money for ML?
We are trying to lobby for that. We haven't talked about it lately because so many other things have come up. But, they are, I, I do believe they've provided it to the state board, at the very least, because we have state board people coming. So what happens to it after that is, we don't know.
Yeah, it's not official. I mean, part of this is why we keep always asking for more at-risk funding, is because that's what, that's what will, that's what will help. And, and the other piece of this is, we haven't even begun to address our students with disabilities, which, as we're looking at that, it's really about training our teachers in how they're making the curriculum available to and accessible to their students, because I don't think that's been part of the process. And so now that's becoming, no, we're buying the curriculum for our special education teachers, and we have to provide them with the training for how they make this accessible to students with disabilities, how that better process before.
Any further questions on that?
See, I told you, I was going to put you behind.
That's okay, we actually have a little extra time at the end, so we're good. All right, item number eight, we're going to go ahead and start with all of our policy reviews, second reading of 1,005 and 1450.
Let me.
And 6,800.
Find these. So many. You're going to see all of my secrets in my drive, so you're welcome. Okay, so this is Policy 1,005, Board Powers and Duties. We did discuss this policy last time. These are the adjustments from our last discussion in line seventeen. We added, Lisa identified that there was a reference to the court case for the quotation, so there was just a quotation that was sitting in there that had no reference. So we've added, so we can add that into that. And then the other change that was discussed was the reference to the new Policy 1450, which we're going to talk about in just a minute, regarding school closures and boundary changes, which is on line forty-five. So the recommendation here is just to go ahead and adopt this policy in business meeting with the added reference to the court case quoted. Do you have any questions or concerns? Policy 1450 is the policy on school closures and boundary changes. The only change since our last reading, lines fifty and sixty-three, we corrected the reference to our policy because they had referenced the state policies, so I put in, it was tying to public notice of meetings. So that's been corrected, and we put in Policy 1410. There was a question last time about lines eighty through eighty-two, and how does this work if they vote on a boundary change and it has to be put in place within sixty days? So I went back and read the actual legislation, and it's in response to a school closure that then results in boundary changes. You have sixty days from the time you vote to close the school to adjust the rest of the boundaries of the other impacted schools. And so, and then the vote for just an actual boundary change must occur at least thirty days prior to the change going into effect. So I hope that provides a help to go back to the legislation on that. So there's the clarification there. So our recommendation there is just to adopt that policy in business meeting. Do you have any questions about that one? Policy 6,800 is School Safety and Security Specialist. Thank you to Gina. We changed the second paragraph from the first reading, so it actually made sense. I will add the years after the House bill references, because House Bill sixty-one is from 2023, House Bill eighty-four is from 2024. We do not have numbers yet for the state code, I have verified that. So, when we get those, and, you know, in my spare time, if we go in and realize that we haven't updated it with the state code, then we can do that at that point in time. We did, Terry mentioned that we did not have the links live to the state code. That has, that will be, that has been done in Procedure One, in that particular procedure. And then, our district leadership recommendation is to adopt the policy in business meeting with those minor changes. Any questions? See, I always can make up time in policy.
You can.
Like, what I was made for. Here we go.
Okay, number nine.
Here we go.
Policy.
Oh, man, this one might not make up time.
We've said all we need to say, though.
We might. I, we might, I don't know. Okay. So Policy Discussion, 4,200, Electronic Devices. This is the first draft that you see on Board Docs. That was a result of our discussions that all day. That was a result of our discussions that all day board meeting in September. The blue indicates the additions from the draft that was sent to families for the survey. So we sent the draft out to families and we took all of that survey information. You guys provided the feedback and then we've created this draft with the blue and the strike-throughs based on those discussions. Um, key takeaways, um, phones are not confiscated, so we did change that language. Um, because we're putting them in a locked container, we changed the verbiage from pouch to a locked container in case for some reason we decided not to purchase the pouch and some other locked container. Um, and we also changed the language where instead of saying that phones and other devices needed to be placed on do not disturb, we realized phones are ever-changing, so who knows what that, what that setting will be? So we just put, it's on a setting where notifications cannot be received. We also added earbuds and headphones as part of the conversation, because we don't want kids to have earbuds in.
Can I ask a quick question about that? Because as I was reading this, I actually wondered to myself why we didn't include headphones. So where is the headphones?
There is, they're all, they're all included now.
Is the updated has?
Every time, in the updated draft.
It's, it's just in the definition I put earbuds, but in, in them I say earbuds and headphones.
It does say that, okay.
We can go through and double check that.
I can make a note. Uh, well, maybe I'm reading the wrong one, but I was reading the one on, that you sent in the email.
Like, it says here, cell phone, smart, online, example, line eighty-four of the draft, cell phone, smartwatches and earbuds. But then I feel like later you say and head, earbuds.
I do, we'll just need to double check. We can add that. Okay, anywhere there's earbuds, headphones shall be.
Yeah, line sixty to sixty-three define earbuds, so we should add headphones.
In line one sixteen, it says earbuds and headphones, must have put it way back.
It just was not consistent.
You're good, you're good.
Oh, my gosh.
That's okay, no, yeah.
You did so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, line one forty-four, the second offense clarification needed. So this was a question that Lisa posed that I thought was actually quite good. So if the parent cannot pick up the phone on the second offense, do you allow the student to take the phone home locked in the container? Or do you require them to leave it at school and the parent still comes in? I mean, the, at, at some point, the parent's gonna have to come in, but do you want the school to have that liability? I would love to hear comments from the audience too on this one um part, especially Jared and Daryl on this one, Jason. Or do we require them to leave it at the school and we walk it up?
Um, I think that we should let them take it home in the pouch, because knowing that your phone is not with you.
Just gets anxious, yeah.
And they're like, what's gonna happen to it's not with me? But if it's literally just at your house on your dresser, it's just locked, then your parents are also more likely to take you back to go fix it, because it's with you in your possession. So I say let them take it home. But then also make sure that the, the fine is there, so they know like, if they try to break it open, you're getting fined.
Right.
Well, I was gonna say, my concern is that we have more incidents of people figuring out how to open it. And I don't know, there's probably hacks that wouldn't actually break it, that would still open it. And they'd have time to go research that.
Oh, I'm pretty sure there's already websites about that.
They go research all that, so, and I understand what you're saying, but that's also a, another part of the consequence, right? That they're not gonna have their phone in, might have to feel that pain a little bit.
I do have a concern with the liability of keeping it at the school.
Yeah, I don't know that's our place to keep someone's phone, though. I mean, after hours or whatnot, that.
Daryl, what do you wanna say?
How would you know? The question is that, and I might be overthinking that, but a student has a locked, teacher gives them the container, fourth period, and the bell rings, they get up and go home. Administrator doesn't know that.
They're not gonna know until the student comes down. And they'll have to say, this is the second line, that's a good one. That's a good point.
They're not gonna come in at the end of the day and be like, my parents couldn't unlock this, so here you go.
So here you go.
Right.
I would, anyway.
Take it on with me.
So I don't know that there's a way to control that either.
Right, they just.
I wonder if this is something.
Wait, wait. I was just thinking, if their parents can't come pick it up and like we let them take it home, does that mean we're gonna have admins stay longer and work longer office hours? So that way, like, there is a time where the parent can come in and?
I agree with that.
Like, like.
I think our admin, I, I will just say this, almost always you're gonna have an admin at the school until like.
But you can't get into the school often.
Yeah.
I, I, even in the middle of the school day, you cannot get into some of our schools very easily. But I'm just gonna say, if you're working every single day until five or six P M., then it's an equity issue to me about whether or not that parent can get in that school to get that unlocked. So how, what happens? Like, do we make those cases separately or agree to have someone there at a certain time? I don't know.
I just know as an admin, I would never have an issue if, like, you almost always have an activity that's taking place at the school. So if we're calling the parent to say, by the way, we, your student has a phone that's locked, when can you get here? And if they can get there at six P M., probably somebody's gonna be there. And if they're not, then I'm gonna be there at seven A M. the next morning, we can unlock it before school the very next day. So, and most parents, if they can't come late one day, they usually can come early the next day. They, you know.
And there is communication, right?
Yes.
About it. So it's not like we're just leaving it to chance, right?
So I assume there's other things right now that get in the way of students learning that have to be taken away sometimes?
Yes.
What do we do in that case? Do we keep those things overnight if the parent's not there to pick it up? Or how, I mean, is this similar to that?
I don't think that a lot of the stuff that we have taken away.
Good, back.
Is, is not, is not as important to the student as this, so, you know.
I, I had to go pick up my kid's scooter for my kid.
Yeah, that's how it goes.
Riding their scooter on campus and they weren't supposed to, and we, they did have to walk home, because I couldn't go till later. They walked home without their scooter and then they had to come confess to me and I had to go later. I mean, they would have kept it, though, if I couldn't have gone back. I mean, that, they, they made him walk home, so.
It's a long ways.
Yeah. He learned a great, he learned a great lesson. He didn't ride his scooter on campus after that.
And I wonder if some of these are gonna be things that we think about and we try to, we try to accommodate for them, but I think we may have to revisit the policy once thing comes up. So I think, I feel like this is probably a good place to leave it. And then if schools come back and say, we need a change, then we can look at it and change it. If we wait until it's perfect, we're never gonna have policy.
Because we have a committee that's gonna look over this.
Yeah, they're meeting tomorrow at four o'clock, so we'll get, we'll get some feedback on that.
Um, new language, lines one sixty-four to one sixty-eight. Students who refuse to lock up their cell phones when prompted by a teacher to do so will be immediately referred to the administration. Students who seek to undermine the consequences of inappropriate use of electronic devices will face further consequences, including but not limited to losing the privilege to bring their phone on campus and receiving a fine for damaging a locked container. Thus was Maloney's original thing that I forgot to put in and then Terry also mentioned that. Um, and then new language for employee expectations based on Lisa's um piece. For this policy to be successful in creating learning environments that are free from distractions, teachers must create engaging learning environments and teach bell-to-bell enforcing the policy as written. Teachers should also model appropriate cell phone use and not use their devices during instructional time except in emergency situations. I feel like that was like, duh, like, teachers are supposed to follow policy, but not creating like this. Who, like, we're not elevating necessarily this policy above any other policy that a teacher should be up against.
Yeah. I like the emphasis in both the beginning and the end, create engaging learning environments.
Um, so just further discussion that you wanna have, um, our next steps, we have the committee meeting tomorrow. We can make any suggested changes. Um, Caleb and Shawna will get this put on the district website for comment. It, um, we'll review those, um, any feedback that we have in pol, in our next policy committee. And then adjustments can be made. Our thought was to bring it to the first meeting in November, because we, the second meeting in October just doesn't really feel like it provides enough time for that comment to come in, so I felt like that might be more fair.
And do you think that's a good timeline too for having any place at some sort of, I think.
I think, and I think where there's been enough dialogue now about it, I think people are starting to figure out. And to be fair, this isn't really changing our elementary or middle school policy at all. It's just creating a district-wide policy for what the high schools have already started to do. Um, and our, um, and the other piece of this is it is adding the watch component. So, you know, so I think it will help parents to be like, and if teachers can help with that, you know, like where they're like, okay, everybody make sure you put your watch on, do not disturb or whatever. And then they can still wear it, because we've had parents that are like worried that they'll get stolen. And then at the end of the day, they can remind the kid to turn it back on. I, I think we can have some help there, I'm hoping. All right. Cell phone done.
Sweet.
Patrick.
Okay, item number ten.
Four thousand.
Four thousand, seriously.
Okay, Judy, you're up.
Hey.
This is so exciting.
I'll be the one to get us back on schedule. Okay, we have um updates to a couple of policies, forty twenty and forty twenty-one. And then some procedures that are there for you to take a look at and give feedback. So forty, Policy forty twenty is curriculum development and adoption of instructional materials. The only edit in this one is some title changes. Previously, it referred to the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and those have all been changed to the Directors of Elementary and Secondary Teaching and Learning. So for Policy forty twenty, that's the only, that's the only edit. Connected to forty twenty are four procedures. One of them has some minor edits, the other three are new. And I'm happy to run through each of those and summarize those if that would be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so forty twenty, Procedure one, this is our district adoption process. This is, it was already an existing procedure, it's not new. So we had the same title changes in this procedure that we had in Policy forty twenty. And then also the guidelines regarding sensitive materials that were in the procedure, we pulled those out because Policy forty twenty-two, which the board approved in last board meeting, contains all of the information regarding sensitive materials. So there were just deletions, it was just all pulled out. So that's the change for Procedure one. Two, three, and four are new procedures. So um Procedure two is supplemental materials. And these are for mater, these are for instruction where either there's not core materials already board approved, board adopted materials, or in cases where teachers are needing to supplement maybe their core instruction. So basically, it provides guidelines for teachers, points of consideration as they're selecting a supplemental material for instruction, things that they should consider to make sure that they are appropriate, that they meet law and policy, um, that they meet core standards. So there's a list of things that should be considered um for supplementary materials. And then there's an additional list they should continue, they should consider for things that are time-sensitive. Um, we did this kind of with like the election in mind, you know, things that are news events, news articles, things like that. Some additional things that should be considered. Um, and the principals will really guide what this looks like in their schools. The policy indicates that principals will train their teachers, um, but how, how this operates and how this works in their schools is guided by principals. Any questions on that one or comments on that one?
And we'll provide the training materials for the principals, so they're not stuck trying to figure out and navigate all of that and provide a way for teachers to ask us questions about things, so that that doesn't all fall on the principal's plate.
Yes, for videos, we're making videos.
We're making videos.
Right.
It's gonna be awesome, yeah.
Okay, um, Procedure three are supplementary novels for secondary E L A classes. So this, so we have, we have a core curriculum for secondary E L A that has identified novels within it, but teachers might want additional novels to those that are part of the adopted curriculum. And this just provides a process for them to go through to get those novels approved. Um, and it also includes a link of the novels that the state has indicated must be removed by schools. Any questions, comments there? Okay, and then Procedure four is for apps, websites, and other technology tools. So again, this provides a process for teachers and administrators to request um that they are able to use apps, websites, programs, and things like that in, within their schools. Um, we want to ensure that teachers have what they need for instruction. Also, by putting it through this approval process, it prevents our tech department from being overwhelmed by having redundancies in our system, which we have a lot of that right now. I, I think, um, I don't remember the exact number, but I think we have fifty-something digital calculators. You know, maybe we just need five, you know, so, so things, we're kind of trying to eliminate that. And, and also, we, you know, we'll often have schools or teachers separately wanting to purchase things. And when they do it separately, it's a lot more expensive. So we wanna make sure that we're being good stewards of resources and getting the best prices that we can. So it provides a process for getting all of those things approved.
Way to slip in.
I didn't say, I saw what you did there.
Did you see that? Yeah, 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 thanks. Thanks for, thanks for picking up on that, I appreciate it. Okay, so those are the four procedures with forty twenty. Any, any questions, comments there?
Um, how do us, like, regular classroom teachers get this information easily accessible to their spot on the website where it's all compiled easily for them, that they don't have to come search our policy?
Yeah, I, I, I think probably, I think step one is to get this approved. We're gonna do our videos with our training, make sure teachers and administrators really understand how all of this works. And we'll figure out exactly where to put it so it's really accessible. I think on the website, yes, um, we'll, we'll make it so it's easy to find.
One of the things Shawna had suggested is that we have the Employee Resources tab. We can actually create that, so it's a login for employees. And then we can start to create some spaces where it would be really easy for them to navigate through. It'd be like, novel applicant, you know, novel approval, click here, you know? And so um, we could, we can do some better things to make that more accessible to employees. It's a great question.
Anything else on those so far?
Okay, great, Judy.
Okay, and then the last one is Policy forty twenty-one, um, which is our school library and media policy. We, just two, two changes to this. One is we changed library to library media. That's just how it's referred to in state law and in state documents. We just wanted to be in alignment with that. And then also, we removed all of the guidelines related to sensitive materials. This is where they used to live, was in library policy, and now it lives in forty twenty-two. So we just reference it here, but the, the guidelines live in forty twenty-two. So it's just deletions really in that one. Any questions? Any comment on that?
That's a lot of cleanup and work that you did with, with our policies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy and Doug did a great job on her.
Yeah, that's a question. And do we have student travel ones as well for that?
Yep. So making that one up. Thank you. So our recommendation is this is a first reading, we'll post online, and then we can go ahead and put this on the agenda for October twenty-second. And I feel okay about that part.
I have a question. I don't know if it's specifically about these policies or just policies in general. It's, when we're putting these on the website, how are we gonna be in compliance with the websites and how?
We don't put them in as PDFs anymore. We used to, so you'll notice some of our policies are in PDFs, which is not in compliance with it. So as Shawna's going in and updating them, they're all like web-based, so they can be translated and it, and it works with accessibility keys.
Okay.
That's a great question.
Okay.
I just am noticing on our board docs with each of these agenda items, if you go, we had, you guys did this, there's gold and you can click on academic achievement. That's fantastic.
So cool, Bonnie.
And then it takes you to that goal. So it's embedded in each of our agendas.
Very awesome.
Sorry, that was it.
That's pretty great, right? We heard that feedback and we make it happen. I really have told people, we are putting it in every agenda and people are gonna be so sick of it by the time. I don't care. Here we go. Okay, so this is Policy Discussion four thousand six, Procedure two tied to student travel. And what brought this up is our discussion of middle school travel. This is on page four of the procedure. And really just wanted to have an opportunity, um, the policy committee really didn't wanna wrestle with this and make a recommendation. They just basically said, I think the whole board needs to talk about this. So here are just some things to think about. So should middle school travel be allowed during the school year? And, and if so, is it limited? Are there only specific instances? Are we opening this up to like we do with high school travel? If you are gonna limit it, what should that look like? On page six of the policy, it talks about exceptions at the high school level would be for national competitions and prestigious invitationals. Is that sufficient? Do you want more specifics tied to that? And then how many days of school can be missed? Um, our policy says to accept in those particular instances of prestigious invitationals and whatnot. And then we, we made exceptions to that, like, um, I'm gonna be bringing to you next board meeting um, a DECA trip where they're gonna miss four days of school, because there's just, it's how it falls and it's a, and it's a national competition. And there's just no way to work around that if the kids are gonna be part of that. And so.
Yeah, high school.
It's a high school. Mm-hmm. The, um, I know that Devon would want us to always think about um cost considerations. The more we open up middle school travel, then for every few ways student, you know. The more we open up middle school travel, then for every fee waiver student, you know, the school's trying to figure out how to manage that and what does that look like as a district as we're trying to cover those costs if for some reason that program can't cover those costs, so.
I have a question on that, or do you wanna go through?
No, that's it, that's, those are all the questions. I just thought could guide your discussion.
So if we were to allow certain types of middle school travel, it still goes through the principal first, right? So they can kind of decide, hey, we're not gonna participate at a national level because I know my budget and I'm worried about the cost. And so it wouldn't mean coming before the board because of that consideration. Like the principal can decide before it comes out, right?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna tell you that if I'm the principal in that, I'm probably not gonna be the one that's gonna wanna tell the parents no that their kids are gonna travel. So I'm gonna hope that Devon's gonna find her magic money tree and help me out on that. Am I wrong in that Darrell? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna wanna be the bad guy in that.
They're gonna hope we help them out.
Yes, so I'm gonna, so I think realistically to say a principal's gonna tell them no, I, I don't know that that's a realistic expectation.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. You're welcome. Very direct today, I've been told that many times today already. Really great.
Someone's gotta do it.
I guess. So Gina, you had talked about you didn't like more than two school days being missed and I, I don't know.
Well, especially because it's in policy. I think my thing is, if it's in policy, we're gonna get into trouble if we say this group can do it and this group can't do it. And so we need to be very clear in the policy, we need to actually follow our policy. So if educators and the board feel like it's okay for a middle school to miss four days of school, which I am not on that page, but I could be convinced maybe, then, then we need to change our policy. But we need to be following the policy. It needs to be fairly easy for us to look at and say, this doesn't follow policy, this does follow policy. I feel like we have kind of been all over the place. So that's my thing. Like if we, if we, if, we just need to have a policy that we're actually following. What's the point of having policy if we don't follow it and make exceptions to our policies?
So initially at the policy committee meeting, I was saying that I think middle school should be allowed to travel. But after a few comments that were said and just sitting and thinking about it, I don't think they should be allowed to travel during the year, only because we know that majority of them are going to Timpew. So they're gonna have the opportunities in the same curriculum to travel. And then it takes away the factor of students feeling like they're obligated to travel and make up the money to go on trips. And there's about three of them, or two to three, that overlap with the same amount of kids. It's the same kids actually. So they'd be paying like four thousand dollars just to go on a middle school trip, for two of them. And I feel like at a middle school level, at least for me, I was still trying to figure out what I wanted to do. And I was doing orchestra. So if I was in orchestra and I'm still trying to figure out if I wanna do it, and then I feel obligated to go on a trip, then I'm like, do I even wanna do this anymore? So I feel like just taking that factor out, letting kids figure out what they wanna do. And then in high school, they can figure out, yeah, I'd like to travel. I'll take this class because I know that they're gonna be doing this. But if you open it up to everyone, I feel like our budget is gonna get cut pretty short. And a lot of people are gonna come in. So I agree with Gina, just making sure that your policy is the policy. And people should know if it doesn't follow the policy concerns, then you can't take it to the board. It shouldn't be like a maybe you can do this, or maybe they could say yes. We just need to stick to what we do in our policy. Or else it's gonna create some animosity that some group went even though it didn't follow. And there, there is follow the policy and they don't get to go. So I feel like just being really strict with our policy. And I don't think that middle school should be allowed to travel during the school year at least.
And just for the record, the board has never violated their policy in terms of travel. So because they did vote down the one trip that was asking for the exception of the three days.
What about the other middle school trip? Was that against policy? Because they were going three school days, weren't they?
No, because it says specifically in policy that if it's for a prestigious invitational or a national competition, they can miss more than two school days.
So we don't, we don't, we don't delineate, my brain isn't working today, between high school and middle school.
Not in that, not in that exception.
Because how often are we seeing that in the middle school? To see like prestigious invitations or something?
We rarely see, I feel like we rarely see club-based travel in middle school anyways.
It's like science olympiad and.
It's the science bowl. And this drama trip that is happening at Centennial is probably one of the first things I've seen for middle school that's very club-like, specific, or not club-specific, but you know, like sub-subject-specific. Typically, our middle school travel is just.
Summer travel.
The summer history tour, right? So, so it's what we get when we get something new, right? I guess we have to figure this out, but.
Well, because prestigious invitationals does open a door for some interpretation.
Right, as we saw.
And that's, yeah, and that's kind of, I think, where we.
Right. And that's where you could end up with people who are like, well, why didn't we get to go where someone else did? And it would come down to saying, well, the board felt this was a prestigious invitational and they felt this was not prestigious.
You know what I mean?
So I, that's a little bit tricky, I think, with some.
It gets tricky, and yet if we don't allow it at all, in the example of this group, right? Do they have something at a state level that they could go to? I don't know of one, but like the orchestra kids have a state thing that we don't have to approve because it's, but they do miss school to go up to their state competitions for a day or whatever, right? And so it's like, we don't wanna open up the floodgates, but we also wanna make sure that. Well, I, I would like to, to, to keep some of these exceptions for some of these opportunities for our students that would help them advance and give them opportunities. And I don't know how it is with Shoreline, because they know their schedule is different. But with Centennial, it seems that students generally get a few more electives at Centennial than they will at Timpew. And I think sometimes they will have a few more of those kinds of opportunities while they're at Centennial. And then they kind of narrow their focus at Timpew and then not choose to do math olympiad again or whatever, so.
Can we ask where middle school teacher, is it possible to ask?
Well, I just, I have some thoughts on this because this is an equity issue in our district. Like I feel, I don't know if y'all have come to one of our Shoreline band concerts, but we do well competitively. And there are plenty of national prestigious things that I get emails about and people telling me I should audition. And I just feel like I can't. Because even if you made an exception for my group to go, there's so many kids on fee waiver, there's no way I could go. So I feel like it shouldn't be like, well, this school should come up with the money to do it so they can go to this prestigious event. You know, like was brought up in orchestra. I mean, my band kids can't come up with thousands of dollars. Like if we got access to Midwest band orchestra, they'd be okay. So yeah, I, I have a problem with this based on equity.
Yeah, I mean, I think that opens up, right, I think, as Kristy's saying, she has been invited to do things, right? Just like I think this drama, our drama program at Centennial was invited to audition, right? Which lends to Lisa's point, that we're, if we do get more of these, we are the ones deciding what is prestigious enough, what qualifies as this extra next step qualification, right? I think I'm leaning towards, it seems more simple to me, and I think there's concerns with even middle school travel generally. Like I say, we, during the school year, our middle schoolers don't really travel out of state. That's, I think that seems the clearest decision-making, clearest way to make this decision. And I think that there are other opportunities in the future for our kids to travel and do things. But that's, that's my opinion, as I've thought about it and listening to input. And I, yeah, I, I get it, that, that is maybe hard for some who have, will have, have had an opportunity in middle school, but. And both of our middle schools do the Boston and the DC trip. And that, and even with that trip, that's every year. And we are concerned about cost and not, not doing a big trip every year, our middle schools are doing that. Which is, I think, if that's part of our discussion at some point. That's my.
I think typically on the middle school trips, they rarely get returned students. I think that that's an incredibly small percentage of kids who go to both.
I feel like when they presented, they did say some kids, there were kids.
Some kids do. I think they said like four or six overlap, right? Like very, it's.
I wonder if that's an equity issue as well, they don't have the money. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, that makes a bit of sense.
I have a question for Darrell. I don't, I don't know, but I know years ago, the science bowl team traveled to Idaho because there was no good in-state science bowl competition. So do you know, do they still have to travel out of state or do they do in-state?
I don't know, I think it's in-state as far as I know.
Lots of science bowl.
Because I just worry about if we shut down everything, I mean.
There's Idaho, it's in four hundred and twenty-five miles.
It depends on where, if it's Boise, no.
Boise, I think they went to Boise, I feel like it was Boise.
But if they miss a school day and we're saying we wouldn't allow that, then that would be part of what we're talking about, right? And.
I'm saying, I guess I'm saying out-of-state travel. I think I'm speaking specifically about.
Well, she was talking about Idaho.
Yeah.
Or whatever, our destination is four hundred and whatever.
Out-of-state or with our current, our current boundaries with our four hundred and twenty-five mile.
Yeah, we could do that.
Because there are like, I know middle schools can compete in the Shakespeare Festival. I know there are opportunities in less than four hundred and something miles. I mean, they're not, I love those opportunities for students. But I do believe that like, there will still be time for some of those. And there is a cumulative financial impact to some of your concerns, you know, for us, to families. And often families will have in, in middle schools well as a couple of students in high school. And so then, I, I guess just being mindful of all of that, I don't know.
Can I, can I ask a question? Do we have any kind of way to know exactly how many middle school trips are being taken? How many, how many, how much is this even an issue?
We only had two last year. We had a sc- well, we had one last year at a science bowl and then we had our summer ones. But there was only one during the school year.
So it's not, it's not, like if we decide to go no travel during the school year, it's not gonna, it's gonna affect one, maybe two trips total, right?
And, and give us more clarity, I think.
Yeah. I mean, I think I'm leaning towards no travel during the school year. But what if, I mean, I was just thinking in my, I mean, what if we allowed travel like over major breaks for middle school? Spring break or where we have, where there is no school, right?
But the cost is fine, but it's.
But the cost and equity issues are still there, right?
And, and so far, the middle school travel has been these groups that go to specific competitions that happen at specific times, right?
Yeah.
Which are the groups they sign up, they know when they sign up that there's a possibility to go to.
Right, the competition. No, I was just gonna say, like, I think part of this came up because this group was gonna miss four days of school.
It's three days.
Three days of school, which is concerning, especially for me, so.
Just have a hard two days missed, is that kind of what you're.
Um, one thing I think is important to consider is middle school kids are sponges. So, because things are learned, because at first.
Can we quote you on that?
Oh, one hundred percent.
I know, I love it. Middle school students are sponges.
Because I know, I'm gonna go a little off track, but I'll come back. But I know when I was in middle school, I was learning the math and I was like, why am I learning this? Like where am I gonna take this in life? But then I had a teacher tell me, you're learning this because middle school is to learn strategies for high school that you take into college. So for me, if you're allowing kids to leave school, that strategy is gonna be learned. And then like, oh, well, I get to miss three days of school this year. So if you're just gonna set a standard, I feel like middle school is the most important time to teach your kids, this is what we expect out of you, this is the learning strategies you need, and this is how you need to attend school and be active in school. So I feel like allowing them to travel in high school, once their maturity levels have strengthened, then it's better for them. But in middle school, I feel like kids are still learning and they're still taking in a ton of stuff. So I just think that's something to consider.
Okay, we're, we're running low on time.
Extremely.
So how do we wanna proceed on this? Do we wanna have everyone send in suggestions and we can?
My two suggestions are the following. You can refer it back to the policy committee and make, and make them wrestle with it. Or you could keep the policy and procedure as is and just review it, say, a year from now and see if it has opened the floodgates by having this Centennial situation happen. If it doesn't open the floodgates, then maybe it's okay to have it. I think we also need to recognize, I just wanna say one thing about the missing school. Kids miss school also to go to competitions that are during the school day. So it isn't just overnight travel that, that leads to that. Sometimes that happens as well if I'm gonna go to a region competition and then a state competition. Those aren't always after school, sometimes they are. But, but sometimes I'm missing school, or kids are missing school for field trips and different pieces too, so.
Overnight just ensures they miss more.
Yes, it definitely, it's, it's the whole day and they're probably not doing homework. And there is no parent supervision.
Out of state, and then there's the cost. So I think if it was just the missing school, I would be much more okay. We just capped it at two, but there are, it's like, they're stacking and I hate to be the bad guy. And I hate to take away, not take away, but I hate to be the one to say, you can't do this because maybe some other kids can't afford it. But I don't know how else to do it. I don't, I don't, I don't know.
I like the idea that wait and see, if we don't already have a concern to us, like.
Then we're gonna end up in the situation again. We're gonna end up here again and we're gonna do the same thing. Oh, we didn't change it, what, 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 like, are we gonna? So I guess the question, the question is, do we wanna clarify it or not? That's the question.
That, that is, yeah.
That's the bottom line question.
If we wanna, if, yes, I think even as, as is, is allowing still some type of overnight travel in the school year. And if, if we don't wanna close that, then I think we're, we're where we need to be with, with current.
Do you wanna refer it back to policy committee and tell them to make a recommendation?
No, I think this is, this is a board decision. This is a board decision. We're gonna refer it back, I'm gonna refer it back to us because this is our decision. So maybe we need to email board leadership, tell them what we think. And then based on what the numbers, then we know which direction we wanna go. Sound good?
Yeah, I think that sounds great. Is everyone okay with that? Send us your, send us your input. And are we just input on whether we wanna just cut it off for summer only?
Do we want clarification on this and cut it off, or do we wanna just leave it? So I think that's, do we wanna make clarification, do we wanna leave it?
And if you want clarification, what clarification would you want to see?
Yeah.
Because they're just clarifying what we have or they're making changes.
I guess what, I don't know how we clarify more what we have. I think that's, in policy committee, it felt like, well, there's the exception for these prestigious invitation or, you know, moving up. But it didn't seem clear of how to clarify that anymore than it's already clarified. It's gonna always have a little bit of gray area in there.
The clarification there could be that those prestigious invitations and things apply to high school.
Only.
Oh, I see, I, I was thinking just for middle school, okay, sorry. I was thinking.
I thought there was one middle school.
I thought it was just for middle school, there was a middle school section and then.
Next level of an academic program such as.
It's down later when it talks about, when it talks about if you're gonna miss more than two school days, then there are exceptions built into that, it's on page six.
And that doesn't distinguish between.
It doesn't distinguish between high school and middle school there.
So we could just make that clarification, that there are no exceptions for middle school and it only applies to high school. That's one clarification we can make, or we can clarify that we just do summer only. So those are the two really I think that would make sense. Okay, let us know.
Okay.
All right. Do we have time for the quarterly newsletter?
I'm just gonna do that on the board update.
Okay, great, so we'll.
It's human, so we have to.
That's okay.
That's okay. Is there any, any quick consent calendar questions we can do in one minute or if we need more time than that?
I, I did notice that Board Docs does not have Devon as the business administrator.
All right.
I thought I just said already, but I'll find, you might need to show me exactly where you're looking. Because I may have changed it in one place and not another.
Okay.
And then.
And then I had a question, the purpose of the utility? That was a big giant, that was for all the buildings, right? That wasn't just for one building.
Yeah, it's for all the buildings, plus the end of the summer. And the buildings are being turned back on.
That was a big payment.
They are big payments during the summer and especially as schools start.
That's it.
Great, and then just some quick calendar reminders, fall break is coming up. We have our study session on the twenty-second. And then reminder that we're having a joint, Board and City Council meeting on the twenty-fourth. So if you have agenda items for that, send those in. Okay, is there?
And just keep in mind that our next meeting is fall break that day still, but we are meeting that.
Fall break isn't technically, yeah, school's not back in session till the twenty-third, so.
Yeah.